Did you run around campaigning for us?
All right, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Recording in progress.
Trustee DeBoer?
Here.
Trechell?
Here.
Pfeiffer?
Here.
President Fannerstill?
Here.
Trustee Walshleger?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Holquist?
Here.
At this time, if you'd like, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Holquist.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have public comments. For anybody that would like to speak in public comments, please head to the podium. Seeing as there are none, do we have any on Zoom? There are none. Anybody else in the room want to speak? All right, well, we'll move to our first item, which is a consideration of the village board minutes from the January 22nd meeting. I will be abstaining.
I'll make a motion to approve the village board minutes of January 22nd, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the village board minutes for January 22nd, 2024. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
I abstain as well. Do you need a roll call or do you got them all?
I got them all.
Now we have, that motion passes. Now we have items related to the vouchers. We have consideration of vouchers for a payment in the amount of $5,524. I'm sorry, I'm starting the number over.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $5,524,510.31.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items related to licenses and permits. We have consideration of operators bartenders licenses. I am getting to that page. This is for Courtney Barber, Emily Flathammer, Maria Garland, and Emily Hoben.
I'll make a motion to approve as red.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the operator bartender's license, licenses. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items referred from the January 15th, 2024 Plan Commission meeting. Consideration of, we would, consideration of a motion to approve renovation plans for Empower Movement at 123 Lawn Street.
I'll make a motion to approve renovation plans for Empower Movement. Do we need?
Someone can, someone can second it if they want to, otherwise he can speak first, either or.
I, and run the hose down through the roof drain there, and it does come out through that pipe. So I'll have, I touched base with Scott, and he said when he's got a building down the road, he'll come and verify it too, but it is just a roof drain.
Okay, well, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem at all. Any other questions about the proposed project?
The lights are going to be turned off at what time?
We're happy to set that at, I believe 10:00 PM is what you guys have requested from somebody else as a user by residential.
Yeah, 10 o'clock is what we, it just says 9 o'clock on the paper, but I think we said 10 o'clock, didn't we?
We'll probably use a photo, photo eye where it will, because we're going to be operating during business hours, so we probably wouldn't run it past 9:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Dave, did staff have a question in regards to, we talked about that earlier, about, is that what he was talking about?
That's what he referenced, yes, the pipe that's off their parking lot.
Okay.
And he confirmed it's off the roof drain.
Has anything changed since we saw you weeks ago?
The only detail that we are considering changing is the cement board siding. Instead of doing it vertically, we're considering doing it horizontally. When we did the rendering of it, it, it looks much better at a horizontal line of site for the proposed building, so we might make that minor alteration, which wouldn't really be a material change, it would just be vertical, or horizontal siding versus vertical siding.
I'll second the motion that's on the floor.
Just make the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve renovation plans for Empower Movement at 123 Lawn Street.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. The motion is to approve the renovation plans for empowerment movement at 123 Lawn Street. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have a consideration of a first reading of bill for an ordinance number 02122024, an ordinance to create 78-9 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code regulating wireless telecommunication facilities in public right-of-way.
So this ordinance was drafted by the village attorney and staff. This ordinance is being created because of the demand of repeaters for 5G cell. 5G cell works on line of sight, so they're, they already have the okay through the state of Wisconsin to put repeaters on we energy poles and light poles. This ordinance, what we're creating here is for, if there's no poles in this area, that they would have to come to the village board, uh, village and abide by this ordinance that we're creating. I want to touch on a few things in this ordinance. So the Federal Communication Commission regulates these antennas and poles. They state that they can be 50 feet in height. We're putting in here on page two, line 65, that it's not going to be any, it can only be 10% higher than the highest structure. We don't want, if there's a bunch of ranch homes, we don't want a 50-foot pole sticking out like a sore thumb. And then on line 68, we said that the structure has to be self-supporting, that they can't put guide wires down on it, because we don't want them all over the village either. Line 172, it says the time of submission, the applicant, the cell carrier must submit proof that he contacted all the neighbors within 300 feet of where this tower is going to be. Just to keep residents in the loop, we thought that'd be adverse to put that in there. Then on line 288, when we're referencing fees, so what they have is, we have a right-of-way permit for anything that happens in the village right-of-way. That fee structure, we just changed earlier this year. So that will fill, they'll fill out the permit through the administration office, so that we'll get 150 bucks for the permit, and then we get $2,000 for a cash bond. And that cash retainer or bond is in case they cause damage to our public right-of-way, that we have something to fall back on to, to repair it. And then we also put in here, the village shall not be required to incur any costs in this project per the applicant must restore. On line 348, we put in here, the village department works, we issue the permit, and a lot of permits throughout the state have a different timeframe, anywhere from one week to six months to finish. We cap ours off at 90 days, so they have three months to finish it, and we don't want these projects to drag on any longer than three months. On page 12, it says that if they have any resident or cell carrier has concerns, they can appeal to you, the village board, that everything has to come through you for appeals. Page 14, on line 500, it says the, this gets into that the permit must do the restoration within 15 days, otherwise the village can restore it, and we can build them with 130% of the cost for restoring in our right-of-way. So that way, we're not doing it, losing money on it. And then we, we have in here, but we're going to remove this on lines 505 to 510. We looked into this a little more. It said the permit holder, which is the cell carrier, must pay the village an annual fee. Well, under Wisconsin statute 66.0414, they say that all we can charge them is $20 per cell tower, and we figure that that's not worth it at this time, because it's going to cost the administration more to invoice that than the $20. So we can revisit that if we have a bunch of cell carriers that want to come in. Right now, there's one, there's a Verizon that wants to put a pole on Cottonwood and North Shore Drive, because there's not an electric pole or telephone pole that they can use at this time. They've been holding on until we pass this ordinance. They've been holding for six months already, but we had to make sure that we got our ducks in a row with this ordinance.
Dave, can they put this anywhere? I mean, can they?
In our right-of-way, it has to be.
In our right-of-way, but a pole, what if the, what if, let's say it's, I don't know, four winds or something, they want to put it in there, and there's already, by the guidelines, there's no above-ground wires or any of that?
Yes, so according to the state of Wisconsin, they can.
They can.
That's why we won't, we don't want anybody in town until this gets established, then we can control it. So the, the one that they wanted to put on Cottonwood and North Shore, they wanted to put it right on the corner, and I met with the building inspector, we're going to make them move it because line of sight triangle, it would have affected that, so we do have, the village of Public Works does have some say in it, and then we'll rely on staff as well.
Okay, thank you.
We have a second reading, but I just want to touch on what we're going to do here for item six, so it doesn't get too confusing. On your agenda, you'll see that there's a consideration of a second reading with the possibility of waiving a third reading of an ordinance amending section 50-232 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to impact fees and schedule of a public hearing. So we're going to consider the second, that being the second reading of, the ordinance can't be waived and done without having the public hearing first. Am I doing that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, at this time, we will have the public hearing for anybody that would like to speak. And if anybody's on Zoom, they could speak. Oh, he's going over that?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. Got it.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ed Maxwell, I'm with Ruger Milkie. I put together the study for impact fees for you. I wanted to see if you had any questions. I also put together some slides that I can briefly go through that might answer some of your questions about them. I won't go through all the detail that was in the study, but just to give you an overview, since it's been a little while since we talked about impact fees, I thought that might be good. So the slide's in your packet. If we could start with the slide that says fundamentals of impact fees, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So impact fees are nothing more than enacting the principle that growth pays for growth, or growth should pay for growth, and so these are charges to new developments to pay for infrastructure to serve those developments. The state statutes spell out what they can and can't cover, and there are a few things you, you can't cover with them, like any operating expenses, any vehicles, also what they call existing deficiencies, which is basically anything that serves the existing population's needs, you can't pay for with impact fees. And then also, anything that goes beyond the forecast period is called excess capacity, so you can't pay for something that's, say, 40 years out, but within 20 years, you can. You can charge anybody who might benefit from these and are causing new growth. That's essentially it.
Just for an example?
Yeah.
Something that may come up in 20 years. I'm not saying we're going to do this, I'm just asking. Let's say we're going to put in charging stations in the parking lot, because we don't have any in the village, that would be something that's, that's those types of things.
Yeah, and you can update your fees to include them, then.
Right, right.
Yeah.
We're not doing that. Just saying for example.
Yeah, good question. And the requirements, these are the things you have to include in the study in order to enact them. You have to define what the service area is. For, for you, it's the whole village, so that's simple. What does your growth forecast look like? What current facilities do you have to serve your existing population? And what are the service standards you've selected in order to determine what, what the needs are for the future as well? And then what are those future projects that you want to pay for, and what are the costs? And then statutes also require taking a look at housing affordability as well, so that's in the study. And then recently, the law changed, so you have to provide developers with an explanation for what their fees are paying for. This study can serve that purpose. You just hand a copy of this to them, or send them an electronic copy, and you fulfill that requirement. And you've already made the study available, issued a class one notice, and we're at the public hearing, so after this, you can decide whether to approve or not on these. The next slide, really, impact fees are just a division problem when it boils down to it. There are lots of numbers that go into them, but you're looking at how much do you have to pay for these new growth projects and dividing it by your growth, however many houses that is, and other kinds of new development. So that's it in a nutshell. We can move on to the next couple of slides. The statutes do require you to do some ongoing things, like reporting out every year on what was spent and what was collected for impact fees, and then tracking each account separately. And then you do have to refund the money if you don't spend it within a certain amount of time. Eight years for most impact fees, 10 years for sewer for some reason, and so it's best avoided if possible. And this last one isn't a requirement, but I recommend updating it every few years, because costs change, projects change, forecasts change. Getting into the specifics, Heartland, you've had fees since 1998, which is great. A lot of municipalities weren't that forward-looking, and you've been able to pay for a lot of costs because of that. You started out by looking at parks, DPW, and library, did the same thing in 2008, and added a couple departments, police and fire to that. And now we're focusing on parks, DPW, and library again. I'll be back, hopefully very soon, to do police and fire as well. So what we did was, we took a look at what was in your comprehensive plan for your forecast, and we looked at acreage. What is the acreage changing by? And then what's the average number of residential units in each kind of residential acreage? And from there, we get a total forecast of nearly 800, but then we have to back out the units that are in the TID development, since you can't essentially double-collect for things. And so that's how we get our residential forecast. We did a similar sort of process with non-residential. We took a look at the total acreage, and then we split the costs between non-residential and residential based on equalized value, with residential getting about 70% and non-residential about 30%. And so the calculation of the specific fees, there's more detail in the study itself, but you can see sort of the punchlines here for parks. You start with your projects, eligible projects, take the total of those costs, and then deduct what you've collected already and have accumulated but not spent, so your current impact fee fund balance. Subtract that out, and that's the total new growth cost you need to recover. Divide that by the number of residential units in the forecast, that's your new impact fee. And I will say parks is a substantial decline from what you currently have, and that's because you've finished most of the projects you set out to finish. So it's, it's a decline from 1,200 down to $136. Transportation, that's a different story. You have remaining debt from the prior impact fee study, the project you completed there, plus the department is forecasting a need for expanded space, so that cost is included above. And then you deduct, just like you did before, the current impact fee fund balance, and that's your total new growth cost, which is about 700,000. And then that's split between residential and non-residential, and we come up with a fee from there. This is much more than the current residential fee of $250. You can see it's about $427. That's because there's this need for additional space. Library is more like parks in that you're not adding any new projects, you're just paying for the debt you've already accumulated for future growth. And then you're subtracting out that current impact fee fund balance, so you're looking to recover about $240,000. So you're seeing a fee of $458, which is, again, a decline from what it currently is. And so our snapshot summary here shows a net decline in the fees at this point of about 33%. That may change with the police and fire update a little bit later. I may be recommending you raise those, but right now, what's being proposed is a, is a decline here. And there's one other change that I'm recommending, which is tying the rates to some sort of automatic increase each year. For what I'm proposing in the ordinance, it's, it's tied to the Consumer Price Index, so if you see inflation of 3%, you just raise your fees by 3% each year. And we are at the point where you can decide whether to vote to approve, or if you have more questions, we can, we can answer those. That's it in a nutshell.
Staff have any questions? Anybody on the board? No? So with that having been presented, anybody from the public want to speak? All right. So we've held the public hearing. At this time, if someone wanted to make a motion to suspend the rules, to adopt this, that could be done. It wouldn't have to be a motion to suspend the rules, and then once the rules are suspended, it would have to be a motion to approve. Or this is just the second reading, and we've had the public hearing, and the next time we come back, we, we approve it then. Or, or we don't do anything. It's up to the board.
Motion that we suspend the rules?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. The rule, any discussion? And may have a roll call vote. I don't think we have, we don't have to have a roll call vote on that, do we? No. Do you, are you requesting it?
No, I thought we didn't.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The rules are suspended.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance amending 50-232 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to impact fees and schedule, all right, and that's it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, to approve the resolution amending, Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Heartland concerning the schedule of impact fees, which is Resolution 212, 2024. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're still acting under suspended rules. Now we have consideration of second reading with possible waiving of the third reading of... We did? Okay. So I, I had my wording, oh, here, sorry about that. I had my wording a little bit wrong, because I read the, I read what was on there as opposed to saying the ordinance number. So we would also need a motion to approve the resolution, because we've...
To amend the fees.
To amend the fees, yes.
All right, I'll make a motion that we...
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution amending Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Heartland concerning the schedule of impact fees.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 212, 2024, Resolution amending Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Heartland concerning the schedule of impact fees. Any discussion? I will simply say, though I did say those words, I believe the board understands that the vote before this was changing, was amending the Code of Ordinances.
Correct, yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have a consideration of a second reading with possible waiving of the third reading of a bill for an ordinance number 0122, 2024, an ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to municipal court. So this is the second reading. I, if we don't approve this, I don't even know what would happen, but this is the second reading. It does not have to be approved tonight, but it can be gotten out of the way if someone wanted to.
Still under suspending, or we've got to do one?
If the board agrees, unless there's, unless someone opposes that ruling, I would say that we're still under suspended rules. We just had the vote.
Okay, all right.
What, do you guys all agree?
Mm-hmm. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve second reading, waive the third reading for Bill of Ordinance number 01222024, an ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to municipal court.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, it's been moved and seconded to approve a bill for an ordinance number 122, 2024, an ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to the municipal court. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of a second reading with a poss... Oh, that's what it is. Consideration of a motion to, sorry, the order is, we're going back up to A now. Consideration of a motion to approve the successor agreement for the operation of the Lake County, Lake Country Municipal Court, also known as the Municipal Court for Western Waukesha County.
I'll make a motion that we approve the successor agreement for the operation of the Lake Country Municipal Court, also known as Municipal Court of Western Waukesha County.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded to adopt, to approve the successor agreement for the operation of the Lake Country Municipal Court, known as the Municipal Court for Western Waukesha County. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of a second reading with possible waiving of the third reading of a bill for an ordinance, Number 122-2024-01, an ordinance amending Section 6-37 of the Village, of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to operator's license.
I'll make a motion to waive the third reading of a bill for an ordinance, 122-2024-01, an ordinance amending Section 6-37 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to operator's license.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to forego the third reading and to adopt, am I saying this correct, and to adopt bill for an ordinance, Number 122-2024-01. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have a update on hometown celebration.
So we are full swing with the coordinating of that event. It's going to be another great year. Some of the major changes that we are planning for 2024 include a shift from Beechwood to beer capital. So we're going from the Budweiser product to the Miller product. We're also shifting from selling tap beer to all cans. It used to be that kegs were a lot more cost effective than cans. Nowadays, you get about a dollar per pour for, if it's a 14-ounce glass, for a keg, for the glass of a keg, plus you've got to factor in the cost of the cup, which is eight cents. And for a 24-pack of cans, the tall boys, it's about $24. So it's pretty much the same cost and a lot easier with a lot less potential loss in the product. So we are looking at shifting again from, from tap beers to Miller cans. We are adding, I do have a map provided in the packet to kind of see some of the changes. The bar is going to look a little bit different. We're going to be opening it up into the parking lot facing the beer garden, so people know that there's beer under there. We're shifting the ticket booth outside and having its own tent where you'll get tickets and you'll get wristbands. We are going to have another bar up on, under Shelter 2 by the food. And another big change on the next map is we're going to be introducing a kid's zone, which is going to have a rock wall, some bounce houses, and a tent with games and a DJ. We did, just to go back a few months, we did explore a carnival. The two areas in Nixon Park that the carnival could potentially fit would be this area here by the T-ball field and then the parking lot. Last year, we outfitted the parking lot to have electricity for a big concert. So that wasn't ideal, but with the way that the area is laid out and then the power lines, the carnival that we looked at couldn't ideally fit as many rides in that space to be cost effective for them and for it to be an upscale kind of event for us. We also looked in this grass area, but most of the events that they do, they don't recommend putting in grass, because if you get inclement weather and you have a $60,000 truck, or 60,000-pound truck, it could be sinking into the grass and tear up the whole park. So ideally, we're shifting maybe from the idea, I know it was recommended to look into it, but the carnival doesn't really fit for this event. So we are looking at clever ways to make it still fun on Friday night for the kids that will be in the park. So those are some of the major changes coming for 2024. And the next few items that we're going to be considering have to do with the contracts that need to be signed.
Awesome. Now we have, thank you very much, Sarah. Now we have a consideration of a motion to improve the increase in budget for hometown celebration fireworks from 18,000 to 19,200 to maintain the same length and intensity of a show as the previous years.
Yeah, so this was somewhat anticipated, and every year, we're going to need to increase the cost just to maintain the same show. So there is an email from Five Star Fireworks that explains the increase of $1,200 to maintain that same length and same intensity that we have been used to for the last several years, taking it, the budget from 18,000 to 19,200.
They happen to say, I mean, that's a nominal fee, but if you kept it at 18,000, what would you lose? One, one shot, or no? No, I was just being, what's the difference?
That, that's a good question. I, I think the last time we looked at this is you're, you're not going to get as obviously intense as a show, and then, or you're losing time, or possibly both, depending on how they can maximize it to match what we have, but...
If I do recall last year, because we went from the 17 to the 18 last year, we did end up having them give a list out, but it's, that's where they say the time and the intensity. It's either, you can either give up some time, and they do, they shuffle out some of the shots, so the intensity isn't there, or, or they would have to shorten it to keep it intense.
Yeah, I just didn't know if five minutes equals that, or two minutes, or, you know, I was just curious what it equated to.
I'll make a motion to approve the increase in budget for hometown celebration fireworks from 18,000 to 19,200, to maintain the same length.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve raising the amount for hometown celebration fireworks from 18,000 to 19,200 to maintain the same length and intensity of a show as previous years. I would, if we could, Sarah, even though we have a motion on the floor, and I'm, I'm for it, but if we could find out, like if they could kind of tell us, or even if they could, I mean, I'm open to, but if they could just describe and say, hey, you're going to lose this, I don't really want us to lose intensity, that's just my opinion. I want to keep it up so people will keep on walking away saying, wow, that was awesome. And I'm all for the increase, but if they kind of give us what they think is, at least the board could be updated on that.
Absolutely.
I just see every year, it's going to be so, at some point, we might have to have a saturation point, so...
Right, right.
Or a donor.
Or a donor. Well, you know, I mean, I was calling for saying, throw more money in there, let's just light up the sky.
I want it to be longer, not shorter.
Well, that's, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of a motion to approve expenditure of $9,000 for Bella Kane Performance at the Hometown Celebration.
Yes, so they are returning. We have, we need to sign the contract with them. 9,000 is what we paid last year and plan to pay this year. As you all know, we, we are planning to continue to rotate bands with Saturday being a night that didn't have much historically going on. We've been trying to bring a big name in. I think as we're establishing and making it a really big fun event, we're going to be able to rotate out some bands that might not be as expensive as Bella Kane.
I'd make a motion, we approve the expenditure of $9,000 for Bella Kane Performance at Hometown Celebration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the expenditure of $9,000 for Bella Kane Performance at Hometown Celebration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of a motion to approve a contract with Area Rental to provide tents and miscellaneous items for Hometown Celebration.
Yes, so this is an increase from last year. Last year, we were just over 15,000. This year, we're sitting at 19,900. And that's because we, again, we're renting the 100 by 150-foot tent, but we're adding a 30 by 50-foot tent for the kid's zone and a 10 by 20-foot tent for tickets. We are shrinking the stage. It was a little bit big, but, so we're going to shrink it a little bit, but still need sidewall and then the bar sections. The bar sections number has gone up significantly because we have another area that we're wrapping with bar sections.
If I'm not mistaken, you're also, we're also saving money because we don't have to do the electrical work this year?
Overall, the budget, yes.
And how much was that?
Roughly $25,000.
Okay, so...
Sarah, will there, will there be bar tables in the back area?
Yes, I forgot to mention that, yes. If you look at the map, we do have some high tops that are going to be under the tent. The rectangles that are outside of the tent are the picnic tables, but the round ones are going to be some high top tables behind the soundstage, and then on the northeast side of the tent.
Are we renting those or buying those?
We are, we're going to rent them.
But is it from the same company?
Yes, that's in, that's in the quote as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We are still borrowing a lot of equipment from Big Ben this year as well. They've been really nice. They have a beautiful soundstage that we're going to borrow, and we're going to borrow as much lighting as we can from them, so we can kind of pace out the things we're buying for this event over time.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Area Rental to provide tents and miscellaneous items for Hometown.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract with Area Rental to provide tents and miscellaneous items for Hometown Celebration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have discussion and consideration to award contract for Pembroke Baseball Diamond Fencing.
So this was budgeted in the 2024 budgets. There was need for multiple things. The fencing along first and third baseline are all curled up on the bottom, and also that we had issues with the backstop. So the backstop isn't high enough, and we've been getting complaints from families that the foul balls go over the backstop and they're dinging the cars. So we budgeted for this fence replacement. We got, we received three proposals. Century Fence came in low at 56,350. We had a budgeted line item for $68,000, so we're happy with that proposal. This will come out of the CIP budget, so staff recommends awarding the contract to Century Fence Company for the sum of $56,350.00.
Make a motion that we approve the construction of the new baseball fence and backstop and contract Century Fence for $56,350.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Pembroke Baseball Diamond Fencing. Any discussion?
Question, do you have what the other two quotes were? And not that it...
Yeah, they, they...
I trust it was a reference.
There was, Leo, can you defer? I think there was one that was 70,000, and one was over 100,000.
And what was...
The, the reason their century is low, they actually want to get started on it, to keep their people working through the winter. So they're actually going to start on it, and the other ones, we'd have to schedule either right before baseball season or right after. What?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. And I've gone for a month, and I feel like I've never done this before. Now we have a discussion and consideration of award contract for the 2024 sanitary sewer cleaning and television, televising project.
So the Village of Heartland, we contract out cleaning a third of our sewer system a year. We sought this out for proposals, and then we also do, we call it televising. What they do is go in and televise our sanitary sewer lines prior to paving of the road. So we sent it out, we got a couple proposals coming in. Vision Sewer came in low again this year at 42 cents per foot for cleaning and $1.35 per foot for televising. Normally, we clean approximately 80,000, 80,000 feet, and then we also televise about 20,000 feet. This is not a budget item, this comes out of the sewer maintenance account, so it's out of the utility. So staff is recommending awarding the 2024 sanitary cleaning and televising to Vision Sewer Incorporated not to exceed the sum of $60,600. We put the not to exceed because we're finalizing the total footage of televising and cleaning, so it will not exceed the $60,600.
Dave, is that televising, is that a pay-per-view event?
I'll deliver the video.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for the 2024 sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project. Oh, not to exceed the, the sum of $60,600.
Second.
Visi Sewer, yeah.
It, it's been moved and seconded to award a contract for the 2024 sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project in an amount that's not to exceed $60,600. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have discussion and consideration for the awarding of a contract for the 2024 utility contract.
All right, again, this is something we do yearly prior to paving of our streets. We put out this contract, it's for manhole, storm sewer, catch basins, hydrants, and water valve repairs. The American Sewer came in low at $300,170. We did budget in the, in our budget, we had in there 282,150. So it did come in a little bit over, but again, this is the utility, and we don't borrow for this. It's a line item that comes out of the utility account. But the reason for it is the number of catch basins we have, we, after we inspected it, we have to go deeper on some, so the concrete costs and the storm sewer catch basin costs were higher. So there's a couple options we could do here. We could choose to reduce the number of structures getting repaired to hit that 282,150 budgeted amount, but then again, it's also in the utility account. The, the problem with doing that is that if we hold off and do them structures the same year as we pave, now you're risking settlement for brand-new roads, and I don't think we should do that, or, or else you could move forward with this contract as stated. Staff is recommending that we award the 2024 utility contract to American Sewer Services Incorporated for the sum of $300,170.00.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 utility contract to American Sewer Services for the sum of $300,170.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract for the 2024 utility contract. Discussion. I have a couple things that I just want to say, and they are related to this because of some of the upcoming projects. So we are looking to continue to develop and build up, hopefully by developers, Cottonwood Avenue. The wires are an eyesore. It's also part of the bid, and it's part of our downtown, and it's treated like a second class, or it looks like it's treated like a second-class citizen as opposed to the businesses on capital. Once we pave Cottonwood, now we're ripping up a new street if we decide to drop those wires. So I just, I want everyone to just be aware because that, I'm not, I know it's not on you, Dave. I just, I'd like staff's recommendation on what they think on that. And I know it's a tough thing, it's a tough pill to swallow, it won't be any cheaper 15 years from now, but it'll definitely be, I think it'd be a really bad thing if in seven years, a developer comes and that's what's prohibiting developments, and they're like, okay, dig up the street and bury it.
All right, Leo, so let's talk about that. So we did reach out to, so we have We Energies, we have AT&amp;T, and we have Spectrum outside on Cottonwood Avenue. We did reach out to them, and it was, came out to about $1 million per block, and that's not including running the electric to each structure, which means each business, we would have to sub that out ourselves, so We Energies doesn't do that. So, and we didn't get a number on that. If you want us to proceed and get a number on that, we certainly can. We were kind of in sticker shock, Ryan and I, with a million dollar per block.
I just, hopefully you understand what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
I would hate to see us pave that road.
So I, I will tell you this, though. So we can reach back out to, so on this side of the road, on the east side of Cottonwood Avenue, if you wanted to, we could look into... Avenue, if you wanted to, we could look into, this is just Spectrum on this side. So maybe we can eliminate the poles on the east side of Cottonwood, if you'd wanna go that route, and I would have to reach out to Spectrum to see what it would cost to either bury them lines, or they can move them across the street and put them on the We Energy poles.
I would like to know what both are. I mean, I know ballpark, it's around five million to do the whole thing. Ballpark. Maybe it's more, is it eight?
No, I think you're, I think you're pretty accurate around five million.
Right, I just, I don't know.
I'll, I'll look into both of them options.
It's just a tough thing, because once we do repave that road.
That's correct.
You know, we don't wanna do that. So this is for the motion that's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Dave, for that. I just want, and to the board, I'm just saying it because I, I know it's a tough pill to swallow, but I don't know what we're gonna do about that ever. Announcements?
Okay, today, we have a new DPW labor that started. We hired a, a local gentleman, I was born and raised in Heartland, it's nice to retain one of our own, which is great. So his name is Nick McCoskey. He went to Arrowhead, works his way up through Lake Country and, I'm sorry, Heartland Lakeside and Heartland Arrowhead, and he came from the private sector, so we are not stealing from other municipalities, which is another good thing. So we wanna welcome Nick McCoskey to the Department of Public Works.
So we're sitting at ninety-three enrollees for T-ball, which is really good. We are nearly done with our Thursday night concert series, so a few more weeks to book there and the opening acts yet, and a few more bands to book for Hometown as well as far as opening acts go. National Night Out is going to be August eighth this year, and the band we lined up is Trophy Husbands, so I'm pretty excited about that. That's a Thursday night as well. We do have vendor applications coming in for that, so if there is anybody interested in being a vendor in the park that night, that's open now. And we are accepting Hometown Celebration sponsorships right now, so.
Couple recruitment updates. We offered another police officer candidate into our background investigation phase of our recruitment process. This individual comes with fifteen years of experience from UW Milwaukee Police Department, so we're hopeful everything checks out, works out well there. Our other appointment with Taylor Weiss, Officer Weiss, has been going fantastic through our field training program, so we're excited to see where that goes. And then finally, our Citizens Academy is coming up, so anyone interested to do that, or has anyone that's interested to learn more about their police departments here in the Lake Country area. It runs every Wednesday night, March thirteenth through May eighth, six PM to eight-thirty PM, and applications are due by March third, and they're on our website.
What is the cost of that?
It's free.
Oh, good. Oh, yeah, 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 you're right. Chief, are you on? I don't know if that is him.
Can you hear me?
Barely. Barely. Yell louder.
That is across on his mic.
You're unmuted now.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yeah, we, we'll be quiet so we can hear you, yep.
Okay. Just a couple of things, our two full-timers are working out great. Brian Thomas has moved to a twenty-four forty-eight hour shift, as I've got one that's out on leave right now. And then Griffin is working as much as he can between all of his schooling, and other than that, we're, we're staying busy and keep answering calls.
Flag looked great, chief.
Thank you, I only made it over there one night. Got this lousy head cold that started on Saturday, so.
I only went one night also.
I was there all weekend, it was a great event, very well attended, again, strong support by our police department, by our fire department. It's a beautiful sight to see our massive flag flying, you know, we fly it as good as anybody in Waukesha County or the state, so it was really a fun weekend.
I don't have any announcements. Thank you to everybody for all you did while I was gone, not that it wouldn't have gotten done, I don't really do that much, but good to see you all again. The, the, the Veterans Sleepout Event, I don't know how much they raise, but it is a really, really cool thing, and it was, it was just really cool to see. It does seem to be growing every single year by a lot. Like I said, I'm not sure, Tom, any indication?
Don't have the number yet, but it's gonna be a healthy number again.
Good, that's great. It was a really cool thing for the community. The only other announcement I have is more so a question, but I'll throw it out there anyways, but I was wondering, since, since we do have the park board president on the board, and since Sarah's here, I just wanted to ask if you guys could maybe look into, or if the park board could possibly start talking about, if there's any way that we could start to, to talk about the village making revenue off of utilizing the fencing for advertising. It may be something that people think is a bad idea, but I think it'd be a good idea to at least start talking about, I think it could be a healthy thing for the parks, or any of the, but yes. I mean, I'm thinking at various parks, but I think it might not be a bad idea, just, and if you don't want, if you don't think it, if it's already been talked about, it doesn't have to be, but I was thinking maybe the, it could start being talked about.
In the past, we were approached by one of the organizations, and we didn't really have a problem with that, except that we told them that it would needed to be taken down and then put back up for the hometown, and they kind of had a problem with that at that time.
Yep.
So it was kind of dropped, and maybe it'll come back, I don't know.
I was thinking maybe we could make the revenue on it, but I don't know, I don't, but anyways, I don't have any other announcements, so.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.